Good afternoon, it's 3pm and I'll call to order the Board of Directors' regular meeting study session for Thursday, May 16th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyer Hoffman.
Here.
Director Duff.
Present.
Director Martin.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
Present.
And President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you, we have Coram.
And seeing that all five of us are here, we can skip item three. We'll also be skipping item four until, we'll do that on Monday. Item five, Rules of Procedure, counselor?
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the Board, all noticed meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the Board. The President of the Board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The President is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all Board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the President. No member of the Board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the Board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No Board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a Board meeting. And the Board President regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you. Item six, Public Input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the Board on matters within the Board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the Board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the Board?
President Sewell, we do not.
Okay, thank you. And before we get started on our other items, we're going to be polling items 10 and 12 from today's agenda. And that is a word of contracts for construction management and inspection services for the construction of the 13th Avenue, Mission Lakes Boulevard and Thomas Avenue Tropical Storm Hillary Waterline Replacement Project. And the item 12 is the execution of lot line adjustment application for the Critical Services Center. Both of those will be pulled from today's agenda. And we will be changing around the order and actually moving up our closed session item today. We have one closed session item that we will head into before we do the rest of the meeting. Counselor, could you state that item?
Yes, that'll be item number 25, which is Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D1 and/or two and/or three, and it involves one potential case.
And with that, we will adjourn into closed session. We're reconvening from closed session, counselor, can you report out?
Yes, the Board met in closed session, item number 25, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D1 and/or two and/or three, one case, one potential case, and there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. Item seven, Human Resources Report, we will do on Monday.
We are actually prepared to do it
Oh.
right now.
Perfect.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, President Sewell. We have one new employee that we would like to introduce, our business analyst, Will, William Whitten. Some of you may be familiar with Will. He joined us as a temporary employee in October of last year and is now official member of the MSWD team. Since joining us, he has been instrumental in assisting the district with our Intranet development, digitalization of our commonly used forms, data analysis, reporting associated with the safer portal and the state's conservation as a way of life requirements, grant tracking and preparation, as well as fleet electrification research and reporting. William holds a bachelor's degree in administration with a concentration in accounting and is working towards his business administration master's degree. Here to introduce Will is his supervisor, Marion Champion.
Thank you, General Manager Macy. You know, Will is a great person to have in the office. Whenever I think of numbers and I think of number crunching, I think of Will. But he has really been able to handle just about any project we've been able to throw his way. And I think he is going to be a really good addition for us moving forward here at the district, and I believe Will wanted to address the Board.
I mainly wanted to say thank you to the staff and management here, General Manager Macy, Assistant General Manager Champion, and the Board for this opportunity, and we'll be speaking with you all in just a little bit.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, while there are no milestone anniversaries this month, we do have six employees celebrating anniversaries representing more than 51 years of service to our customers. This includes our water production operator, Charles Bell, who is celebrating one year with the district, Office Specialist Two Cynthia Costa, who is celebrating one year, Lead Field Operations Technician Jason Weekly, who is celebrating four years, Customer Service Representative Two Ann Rogers, who is celebrating eight years with the district, Purchasing and Warehouse Specialist Robert Lopez, who is celebrating 18 years with the district, and Lead Field Service Representative David Peña, who is also, excuse me, celebrating 19 years with the district. On behalf of staff and the management team, I would like to thank each of them for their service. Next, we would like to talk about promotions. As you notice, we've had a lot of movement last month primarily due to the trickle-down effect of Marion being named Assistant General Manager and creation of the new Contract Analyst Position, and also a retirement. We have four employees who have been moved into new positions during the past month. First is Cynthia Costa, who was promoted from Office Specialist Two to Administrative Assistant One. Cynthia has been with the district for one year and is replacing Amanda Lucas, who, as you may remember, last month was promoted to the new Contracts Analyst Position. Being extremely versatile, Cynthia supports our operations and HR teams. Here to introduce Cynthia is her supervisor, Assistant General Manager Marion Champion.
Thank you. Cynthia is another employee that we really are fighting around the office to have as her employee. She is very process oriented, and before moving over into this new role, she's supported the Engineering Department, and she's also supported Finance Department. She even did a stint in customer service. So she has really gotten her feet wet in every area of the district, and she's just a real go-getter. Some of you may remember back when we had the Hillary Tropical Storm. She was one of the first people to come in the office that that next day, and she even opened her own home up for any of our employees that needed a place to to rest or get a hot meal. So she's, like I said, she's a joy to have in the office, and Cynthia would like to address you today.
Thank you, Ms. Champion. Members of the Board and MSWD staff, this promotion is not just a recognition of my efforts, but a reflection of the trust and confidence MSWD has placed in me. It's a testament to the hard work, dedication, and support of everyone in this organization. I want to thank my colleagues for their collaboration and inspiration. I look forward to contributing my best to our team and the company's success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Next, we are honoring David Peña, who was promoted from Field Service Representative Two to a Lead Field Service Representative. David stepped into the lead role following the retirement of our Field Services Supervisor. Since then, he has taken on new responsibilities and assumed a leadership role within the department. Here to introduce, I'm sorry, David is not with us, however, Danny Friend does have some words to say about David as well as David's response.
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the Board. As the General Manager mentioned earlier, David has been here for 19 years. I know it's not a milestone, but last year we were celebrating a month and a day ago, in fact, his 18 years. So since April of 2005, David has been with us. He's been in the Field Services Department. That department has picked up a couple of different names, but essentially the exact same department. October of 2023, David was put into that position as an interim provisional lead. As we worked through some changes in the department from the retirement, as as General Manager Macy mentioned. Over the past five months, he's demonstrated his ability to adapt to new challenges and meet the expectations of the lead position, stepping up to ensure things don't fall through the cracks, as there's many things going on here at the district. David has taken on a more advanced task, or taken on more advanced tasks and assumed additional responsibilities with the day-to-day department activities. David conducts himself consistent with our core values, showing professionalism, positivity always, and being respectful to everyone he encounters. All this made it an easy decision to promote David to the permanent position of the Lead Field Services Representative. David was here earlier, but duty calls. He did provide me something to to read. Danny is the best. Sorry. I want to thank the Board and the General Manager. I would also like to thank Danny Friend for entrusting entrusting me with this new position and to work under him. I would also like to thank the community for all the opportunity it has provided me and my family through the 19 years that I have been with the district. Working here at, excuse me. He could have printed this smaller, I'm gonna get on to doing one with that. Working here, as mentioned by Danny, I'm sorry, as I've been, I botched that. The opportunity that has provided me and my family through the 19 years that I have been here, as Danny Friend mentioned. I would also like to thank my coworkers for always making it a great place to work and for striving to always provide the best customer services to our community. As we provide the best water to the world, pour our medals. Thank you again. Thank you.
Next, we have April Scott, who is moving from a Customer Service Manager position to Programs and Public Affairs Specialist. April's journey towards her role speaks volumes about her commitment to her craft. Over the past four years, she has been actively pursuing opportunities to enhance her skills and knowledge in the public, in public relations. Her completion of a bachelor's degree in communication with an emphasis in public relations, graduating with honors in 2022, is a testament to her dedication and passion of the field. In the past few years, April has worked closely with the Public Affairs Department and customer service outreach activities consistently seeking ways to deepen her engagement within the community. Here to introduce April is her supervisor, Assistant General Manager Marion Champion.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to introduce April to you today. She has worked very hard to get to where she's at today. If there's anything that is a lasting memory about April is that she loves this community. She really wants what's best for the community. She cares about our customers. And I know she's going to work very, very hard in the Public Affairs Department to really earn their trust and to earn their 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 respect. She's already been out there representing us at some different community events in the last couple of weeks, and she's already done a really nice job. With that, I'm gonna let April have the podium.
Thank you, Marion. Good afternoon, General Manager Macy, President Sewell, and members of the Board. Thank you all for this wonderful opportunity. I'm truly honored and excited to have taken on this new role. I appreciate the confidence and support of MSWD, and I look forward to further contributing to the district and the community we serve, most importantly. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, Arthur Cabrera, who is moving from Business Analyst to Customer Service Manager. Arthur brings to his new role a wealth of knowledge inquired through 13 years of service in high-volume customer service and billing at Riverside County Auditor Control Treasure Tax Collection Office. His tenure includes over five years of supervisory experience. Always in pursuit of pursuit of personal growth, Arthur completed his bachelor's degree in Business Administration in 2022. With his extensive expertise and efficient billing and payment collection practices, lien enforcement measures, and fixed charge placement on the tax rule, Arthur is sure to guide our customer service team toward achieving organizational goals and efficiency. Here to introduce Arthur is his supervisor, Arturo Salem.
Thank you, General Manager Macy, President Sewell, and distinguished members of the Board. It is my pleasure to introduce Arthur Cabrera for a second time within the last six months, a short period of time. And I think he's gonna be excited to get this over with because he's back there squirming a little, and I think he's nervous. Right. So you can relax. In the short period of time that Arthur has been with the district, he has secured over $400,000 from the Arerich Fund. That was the second time that we got this year. He did that all himself, following some of the guidelines that we had set for him from the prior grant. He has implemented new workflow for customer service, prioritizing emergencies. And he has also done an analysis of the department, for some of the things that are falling short, and include those with the improvements that we're doing with the strategic plan. His background is an accountant, working for a city agency and also the Riverside County and Clerk's Office provide him, provide the department the attention and that also our customers need that attention to detail. I can keep going on, however, I am thrilled to be working with Arthur. I look forward to a great future he has with the district, and I just want to introduce him to say a few words.
Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the Board. I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Arthur Cabrera, and I am delighted to accept the position as the Customer Service Manager. I look forward to working closely with the team to ensure the highest standards of service and customer satisfaction remain at the forefront of our priorities. Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes our HR report today. The management team and I genuinely appreciate and commend these employees for their dedication and commitment to our customers. The nice thing about most of these folks is I've seen all of their resumes when they were going through the recruitment process, and sometimes when you read a resume, you can just see the value they would bring to the organization immediately, and I'm very happy to have all of them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and just a welcome to Will and thank you for all the anniversaries, all the years of service between those six. And then I think my biggest thing is just a huge congratulations for all the promotions. It's great to see that category of our HR report filled up. Just to be able to promote from within, I think our team is only getting stronger. So thank you. Any comments from the Board?
Yeah.
Rest.
I've said this a number of times before, but if you walk up and down this hallway outside here and you see all the plaques on the wall of all the accomplishments that this water district has achieved, you read about it in the paper of of us receiving special awards and acknowledgement, and that is a result of the staff that works here, and I'm very pleased that not only do you get that kind of recognition, but we are able to reward you with promotions, etc. So kudos, hats off. I'm very impressed, very happy with the with the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, Desert Hot Springs High School Real Academy Internship Program, Monday. Thank you. Action items, item nine, Award of Contract to TriStar Contracting for the 13th Avenue Mission Lakes Boulevard and Thomas Avenue Tropical Storm Hillary Waterline Replacement Project. It is recommended to authorize the General Manager to award a contract for the construction of the 13th Avenue Mission Lakes Boulevard and Thomas Avenue Tropical Storm Hillary Waterline Replacement Project to TriStar Contracting, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $720,823.50, plus a 10% contingency, and augment the project budget an additional $120,000 and do all and to do all things necessary to complete the project. General Manager.
Thank you, President Sewell. Before I hand this to Eric, our engineering manager, I just wanted to clarify the the and and the comma, they are pretty important in the motion, in that the contract with TriStar is going to be for $792,000. And then the second part of this is to augment the capital improvement budget in the amount of $120,000. With the things that were incorporated within this project, some of the grant funding that were going after staff time has been increased, as well as some of the requirements of the permitting processing these areas that requires geotechnical services and also construction management services. So that's why we had to add to or augment the budget by $120,000 to make up for those other services in addition to the TriStar contracting. With that being said, Eric, you have a presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you, General Manager Macy, and good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the Board. Due to Tropical Storm Hillary and the unusually large water flows experienced in the Mission Creek Channel, three of the district's water lines that cross the Mission Creek Channel were impacted in some way. First, sections of 13th Avenue, of the 13th Avenue Water Line was washed away because of the Mission Creek Channel flow line was eroded and was ultimately lowered, thus exposing the previously buried water line to debris, rocks, and boulders hitting the water line as it was, as the storm flows were washing downstream. Now presently, 13th Avenue Water Line is not in service, and this project seeks to lower the water line to at least 10 feet below the new flow line of the channel. Secondly, Mission Lakes, the Mission Lakes Boulevard 24-inch water line is currently in service, so that's active. But it is exposed as a result of the high storm flows in the Mission Creek Channel. As with 13th Avenue, as with the 13th Avenue Water Line repair, the Mission Lakes Boulevard Water Line will be lowered at least 10 feet below its current elevation, before the, below the current flow line elevation of the channel. And finally, the Thomas Avenue Crossing at Mission Creek is currently in service and is not exposed a lot. However, the district wants to lower this water line preemptively as part of the project and expects that there will be, and expects that there's minimal cover over the existing water line by a few feet. With, as with the 13th Avenue Water Line, it is currently out of, it is currently in, Thomas is currently in service and is the only water line that is providing water to a smaller community on the west side of Mission Creek. So what we, so water is provided to a community on the west side of Mission Creek by 13th and Thomas. We want to repair 13th first, and then we'll jump over to Thomas. So district staff has been continually meeting also with the Federal Emergency Management Agency on a weekly basis to make sure that needed submittals and backup documents are uploaded to them for possible reimbursement of staff time, as well as securing reimbursement for the construction of the water line repairs that this agenda item seeks to address. In terms of a timeline for reimbursement, that is unknown. However, as more information comes from FEMA, staff will provide an update to to the Board. Finally, staff has performed a contractor analysis on TriStar and reviewed the contractor's license and determined that TriStar is in is in good standing with the state of California's License Licensing Board and has successfully and professionally performed construction projects for the district in the past with no problems. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments from the Board? Director Duff? Director Griffin? Director Martin? Director Meyer Hoffman? I don't think we have any questions, Eric. Thank you very much. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on item nine?
President Sewell, we do not.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 11. Accept Grant Deed for Well 35 on a portion of Assessor's Parcel Number 667-100-043. It is recommended to direct the General Manager to sign the Certificate of Acceptance, approving and accepting the grant deed from Skyborne Ventures LLC, a California Limited Liability Company dated May 8th, 2024 for Well 35, currently located on Assessor's Parcel Number 667-100-043 in the city of Desert Hot Springs, Riverside County, California. General Manager.
Thank you, President Sewell. I believe Eric Weck, our engineering manager, has a present, short presentation.
Yes, I do. Thank you, General Manager Macy. I am just trying to move my screen here so that I can maximize it. It's being obscured. There we go. Great. Okay, can you see that?
Yes, thank you, Eric.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the Board. Item 11 on this afternoon's agenda pertains to the district's accepting of a grant deed for Well 35 on a portion of Assessor's Parcel Number 667-100-043. Currently, the well is located on this parcel here, and it's this blue shaded area. And Well 35 is located on that, but it's not separated from, it's not its own distinct property from this existing parcel. And currently, it's 5.93 acres. This PowerPoint slide shows the new property layout for Well 35. And it address, and the purpose of this agenda item is to have the district formally accept the portion of Well 35, shown by my arrow here, of the well site. The remaining portion of this property, the bigger portion, will be deeded over to the city of the desert, of city of the desert, city, city of Desert Hot Springs for, from the Skyborne Development for use as a future park site. Now generally, this is a minor administrative item, and other than accepting the property for use as as a wealth, for Well 35, there are no other actions necessary. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the Board, Director Meyer Hoffman?
Yes, so I understand it, we're gonna give five acres to the city?
No, sir. This parcel is currently under Skyborne, under the Skyborne Development. And this parcel here, where where it says portion of Lot E, the smaller portion here where my arrow is?
Yes, sir.
That's gonna become district property, sir. And the remainder, this bigger portion here, will be deeded over to the city from the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Director Duff?
Just a couple. In in reading the summary, you talk about how we're gonna complete the project. Just for public knowledge, although there's no fiscal impact for us accepting the grant deed, can you or can staff just let the public know that the construction for Well 35 and all of the work is not going to be coming from ratepayers' funds, that in fact, they are being, that work is being paid by the developer, as I understand it?
Yes, ma'am. That is part of a previous agreement between the developer and Mission Springs Water District that they were supposed to, as part of a development agreement, provide wells to the district to provide service for the development in this area, and this is completely 100% developer funded.
Okay, and they were just to provide two, but what they're providing is a partially singular constructed. Are we gonna stick with one, or are we gonna end up putting two in that site? Is there room for two there? I just am trying to make sure I understood what we previously had done as it goes with this grant.
This grant deed covers Well 35, and the the well itself is there. I think it needs to be equipped. And there's some, there's some other preparatory work to get to get done before it's put into service. Likewise, this is Well 35, what you see here. To the north is Well 34, and that that is nearing completion in terms of rehabbing and equipping it with a new pump. And then between Well 35 and 34 will be an intertie, where we will connect 35, which is shown here, northerly and connect it to the north well of Well 34. And those, both of those wells are are part of the development project for Skyborne.
Perfect. So just one last reiteration, I think that we're on the same page. No ratepayers' funds are going to this project.
That is correct.
Thank you, that's all.
But before, just to continue with that thought, there have been several different agreements. When this project was first proposed, it had two different pressure zones because the topography increases so much as we go closer to the mountains. This is the lower pressure zone, and when this, when the study was completed to look at this area, it was proposed that each site would need 2,000 gallons a minute for both domestic flow as well as fire flow. When they drilled these two wells, the thought was they were gonna get 1,000 gallons each. When they drilled the wells, they didn't get 1,000 gallons. It was less than that. So when you look at the agreement, the agreement was first, was amended multiple times, but one of the amendments created Well 36 or Well C. So what's happened is 34 went into service immediately. There was some water quality issues at the time it was drilled and came into service. There was a uranium treatment facility there. That's why we were talking about the inner tie to 35 and 34 together. That way we could treat them just at one location. However, the water quality has changed, which does happen at well sites, and now that treatment facility is no longer needed, nor is it required at 35. So both of those wells will not have treatment. So both of those wells will not have treatment on their facilities, even though they are sized large enough to have that. Because both of those wells are less than a thousand gallons a minute, they add that third well. We then brought an amendment to the board. For the amendment that we brought to the board, uh, before our last one, so two amendments ago, we received, they wanted assurances that these wells would be up and operational, so they were staying with their commitment to look, to finish out section two. And so at that time, they then wrote us a five million dollar check to cover, roughly five million dollars to cover the rehab at thirty-four, the inner tie, and then equipping thirty-five. Then there was another amendment that came to the board where they wanted to have assurances that they could develop, which you'll see later in the agenda, Skyborne Village Three and then also Village Ten, which are still in this lower zone. At that particular time we negotiated, you're going to have to have another well. However, we have forty-two that's under construction for roughly five million dollars. So what we did is we said for every ninety wells, or ninety lots that you want to develop, just write us a check for a million dollars. So when we were starting to go through Village Three and they closed on that property, they then wrote us a check and we've received three million dollars. We will receive another two million once Village Ten is sold and then starts to be developed. So that would bring the entire agreements as we have in place for the lower zone up to date. And all of that is paid for by the developer.
That is what I know our public wants to know. And I know they're a little disappointed, at least someone who had reached out to me because they were promised this park and now the city is going to be responsible for building the park instead of the developer. So they then question how long it will take for them to get their park. But they want to make sure that they're not also going to be paying for the water work that the developer was promised to do. So I'm, I'm grateful for the clarity and for the clarification on that. Thank you, General Manager Macy.
And, uh, Vice President Griffin has his opportunity first. Yep, okay, go ahead.
The, the corner lot there in Skyborne going east towards, uh, Highway sixty-two, that's where the original park was supposed to be. And it's a bad location for a park because it's too close to the freeway. Thank you.
And I have nothing further. Thank you for the presentation, Eric. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on item eleven?
President Sewell, we do not.
Thank you. Moving on, item thirteen, Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash ten, grant application for West Palm Springs Village Palm Springs Crest Water Systems Backup Intertie Project. It is recommended that the board adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash ten, approving the submission of an application for grant funding for the preliminary planning of the West Palm Springs Village Palm Springs Crest Water Systems Backup Intertie Project.
Thank you, President Sewell. Our new employee Will Whitten will be giving a presentation regarding this application. Will?
Thank you, General Manager Macy, and thank you to the Board of Directors for your time this afternoon. Um, I'm here today to discuss a grant opportunity that was identified by our on-call grant writing firm as potential funding path for a mutual backup intertie project, uh, for, that will boost resiliency for the Palm Springs Crest and West Palm Springs Village Water Systems in the IDE area. This grant would provide the funding for the preliminary planning phase components of the project, which aligns with the district's strategic plan and ultimately the district's master plan to connect the West Palm Springs Village and Palm Springs Crest Water Systems to our main, uh, MSWD system. Uh, the proposed backup intertie would consist of approximately one point five miles of linear pipeline, various valves to control water flow and pressure, and a booster station that would connect the two water systems following Tamarack Road in the IDE area. This has long been a needed project for the IDE area as the two water systems are not connected to our main system and are isolated from each other as well. With only one primary and one smaller capacity backup oil in each system, this backup intertie project would provide the district the ability to move water as needed between the two systems. So this is a summary of the grant application. Um, so as previously stated, the funding provided by the grant would fund the preliminary planning phase components of the broader interconnection project. Uh, MSWD is requesting two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in funding from the Bureau of Reclamation through this grant application. Typically, this grant would require a fifty, would require a fifty percent cost share. However, due to the disadvantaged community status of the IDE area, there is not a matching requirement from MSWD. If MSWD is selected for funding, the award date would be April first of two thousand twenty-five. What you have here is a high-level timeline of the preliminary planning phase of the project. Uh, the anticipated start date would be approximately April fifteenth of two thousand twenty-five with an estimated completion date of June fourteenth of two thousand twenty-six. And are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Director Duff?
Just, I'm looking at the map. Can you tell me some of the streets just so I can get a better idea of where this is? I'm sorry. Railroad Avenue?
Uh, it follows Tamarack. Um, I know on the Palm Springs Crest side, I believe that is Rushmore. And on the West Palm Springs side, Hagen-Lehman.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President. Director Martin?
Nope.
Director Myhafen?
Yes, could you put Exhibit B on the screen for us?
I think you're on a different item.
How many? Thirteen, twelve?
We're on thirteen?
Yeah.
Uh, twelve, item twelve is pulled today. And I have no further questions. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on item thirteen?
President Sewell, we do not.
Thank you. Item fourteen, Public Water and Sewer Systems Construction Agreements and Water and Sewer Bonding Agreement for tract number three-two-zero-three-zero dash three, Skyborne Village Three. It is recommended to approve the putter, public water and sewer bonding agreement for the Skyborne Village Three, tract number three-two-zero-three-zero-three, residential development project and authorize the general manager to do all things necessary to complete. General Manager.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Again, this goes sort of in hand with the well site that we just, uh, are going to be accepting on Monday, hopefully. Uh, our engineering manager, Eric Webb, can give a short presentation on this particular item. Eric?
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item fourteen of this afternoon's agenda pertains to the Water and Sewer System Construction Agreements and Water, Water and Sewer Bonding Agreement for the Skyborne Tract. The board's acceptance of this bonding agreement ensures that water and sewer improvements are constructed by the developer, uh, and will be completed to, uh, district's standards and specifications. Likewise, the performance and warranty bonds ensure that the contractor performing the work will cover the one-year warranty period and will also cover claims by others for materials or labor supplied for the improvements but not paid for and also in case the project defaults. Now, there's no cost to directing staff to executing the development and bonding agreements as this is a developer-funded and constructed project. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments? Director Martin? Director Myhafen? Director Duff? Vice President? Thank you very much, Eric.
Okay.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on item fourteen?
President Sewell, there is not.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion items. Item fifteen, Nancy Wright Regional Water Reclamation Facility Update? General Manager?
Uh, we, we are going to leave both of these discussion items to Monday.
Okay. Moving on to consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda consists of item seventeen, approval of minutes, item eighteen, register of demands, and item nineteen, Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero-nine, adoption of the updated board handbook. I believe we're going to discuss the handbook or have a summary of the handbook?
I believe there was a summary, a redline version in the packet.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
I think we've discussed it plenty unless, uh, anyone on the board wants to pull any of the three items from the consent agenda? So we'll move on to director's reports, item twenty. Would anyone like to go today and give their report? Director Griffin?
Since I will not be here in person on Monday. Um, I had, uh, three DWA meetings in April on four-two. Um, I don't know where my notes are for that. I think my cat threw up on that one. Uh, but I do, I can see the spots. I do have the four sixteen. It's a crazy house. Um, the only question is, can I read my writing? Um, let's see, it was, uh,
You want to borrow my glasses?
It, it has nothing to do with glasses. In fact, that I write like crap and I can never read it. Mostly, uh, the big thing on that was they opted to have an April thirtieth meeting since that they would be at Aqua, uh, for their first one in May. Let's see, on, that was the sixteenth and thirtieth. Uh, they had discussed last September, uh, strategic planning, uh, having a strategic, strategic plan done, and then they brought this up that the, uh, first, the organization that had the lowest cost for the RFP, um, they wanted some changes, wouldn't do it, and then there was a debate as to what they should do. In the end, they decided to just table the whole thing. Um, uh, some comments by our friends, uh, who usually like to tell tall tales. Um, but, um, I'll just leave that for another day. Also attended the Aqua Legislative Symposium on the tent with President Sewell, which was, uh, interesting. Um, some of it was not that informative, and then the one session was actually, I thought, quite good. Uh, and that was pretty much my April.
Thank you. Uh, Director Martin, did you want to go today or Monday?
Monday.
Monday. I will go Monday as well. And we'll move on to item twenty-one, General Manager's Report.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Uh, we did provide a general manager's report. There are two items that we would like to give oral reports to. Uh, the first would be our finance report. Director of Finance, Arturo Seo?
Thank you, General Manager Macy, President Sewell, members of the board. I will do a quick, um, review of our financials. Uh, current, uh, cash is forty-four million as of, uh, March thirty-first. Uh, we're still above by six point six million dollars, uh, revenue over expenses. Um, and this is on, if you're looking for the item, it is page two-fifty. Um, and you can see within the middle of the page where we add the non-operating revenue. That's at four point seventy-five million dollars that we receive from Skyborne, uh, for those projects. That is where we're tracking that, uh, that, uh, amount. Our interest rate is slowly climbing over, now it's now over the one percent mark, so, um, the banks are coming back with some of those gains. Uh, unfortunately, as you can see, our cash keeps dropping every month, uh, by roughly between six hundred and a million dollars. Um, we did receive notice that they're preparing our checks from the state, uh, but have not received those, um, getting ready to start calling them every day. Um, we're, we're going to have to pull some cash from the investments, uh, in order to pay for the loan that's coming up here in, uh, January, um, on, unless we receive those funds, uh, sooner. Um, there is, uh, we also presented the jobs in there that have all the detail. If there's any questions, let me know, but you can see the four major, uh, jobs that are, uh, covered in, in this month is the, uh, regional plant, the intertie, um, and pretty much everything related to the, uh, regional plant. A couple of quick highlights, uh, if you missed it on the, uh, GM report, uh, customer service continues to, uh, take calls and call customers with high bills to get to those leaks faster. Um, doing a couple of, uh, work in, uh, accounting to get ready for the end of the quarter. They're working on the audit right now for two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the others are showing up and going every, uh, doing everything, reviewing through March thirty-first. They'll come back again in September, so, uh, you'll see a, an audit completed this year a lot sooner. And I'm excited about that. Uh, IT, as you can see, um, Kurt continues to work in the right plan to get everything connected and ready to go and including connecting to the, uh, main building, uh, and also rolling out all of those improvements for securing our, the district. Uh, from Aqua, the FBI director that presented about cybersecurity, um, said you cannot get away with not having people change their power, password to every three months. It is just, you have to do it. Um, including a few other tips that they gave us that I'm sharing with Kurt and implementing on the district. So thank you for your time. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Director Martin?
Nope.
Director Myhafen? Director Duff? Vice President? Um, you mentioned pulling money from those investments. Do you have a date that we have to, that we're hopeful to get those checks?
Uh, December. Uh, but as you know, the market is volatile and so the longer we wait, the more chance for those, uh, investment, uh, values to drop. I would rather take the, the gains on those investments versus the loss, uh, which would happen if we wait and not know when that's going to happen. So the better is to take it out when we know we still have those gains versus hoping for gains and ending it with losses. So that's probably within the next two months.
Right. Great. Thank you very much.
Uh, second to give a report would be the Public Affairs Report by General, or Assistant General Manager, Mary Champion.
Good afternoon, Board, Board members. Um, today I have prepared a brief PowerPoint detailing some of the activities of our department over the past month. Additional information is available in your packet. As you'll see on the next slide, the past month has been pretty packed with events and activities, including the CSDA Leadership Academy, the CDCAN Business Meeting, Aqua State Ledge Meeting, and Aqua Spring Conference, which featured a keynote talk from Governor Newsom. We also hosted Assembly Member Wallace at the regional plant and held a successful blood drive just yesterday. On the twenty-ninth of May, we will be hosting another community water talk. This one will feature Chad Seidel from Corona Engineering. We'll talk about water quality and touch on the new regulations impacting water districts across the state. I've also included, uh, uh, added a new free project wet educator workshop, which we are partnering with CBWD to provide. The workshop will guide educators through an engaging, hands-on experience that prepares them to implement water-related educational activities and lessons within their classrooms. In partnership with Cabot's Pueblo Museum and the Desert Hot Springs High School Real Academy, as most of you are aware, we helped, we proudly unveiled the new student-created three-D model of the watershed last month. The event, held at Cabot's Pueblo Museum, attracted, attracted community members and local leaders to witness the unveiling ceremony and engage in discussions surrounding our community's water sources. In addition to the great media and the social media visibility that the event brought, we had more than sixty-five people attend the unveiling ceremony and had almost two hundred and fifty people visit the pueblo that day. Video from the event has been one of our most popular offerings on Facebook during the past month. In keeping with our school outreach efforts, I also wanted to highlight a new internship program that we are currently piloting with Desert Hot Springs High School Real Academy students. Earlier this month, we welcomed two new high school interns, Caleb and Gabriel, both who are seniors at Desert Hot Springs High School. They will be finishing up their intern rotations in both the public affairs and the engineering departments tomorrow. Although they, we, we are planning to introduce them both to you during our Monday meeting and they will be here in person, so you'll have a chance to meet them. Um, and although they did do, uh, stints in our public affairs and our engineering departments, uh, they've been, it's been very valuable to them. They've got a chance to learn about almost every area of our operations. Got to tour some of our sites, look at our wells, our reservoirs, and, um, it's been a very, very good experience. We're currently planning an additional summer internship that will run for three weeks during the month of June. More information will be shared with you as we get that finalized. Also this month, MSWD invited customers to participate in a survey to gather feedback regarding their preferences and suggestions for improving the current water bill statement format. By sharing insights, customers can play a vital role in driving positive change and enhancing the overall customer experience. The survey covers a wide range of topics, including clarity and reliability of the current statement, understanding of charges and billing information, the importance of graphs and visual representation of water use, and additional features or information that customers would like to see on their future statements. Participation in the survey is simple and convenient. Residents can access the survey online through our MSWD website, uh, the Customer Connect Portal, or through a link provided in the e-blast. Uh, we also have English and Spanish paper copies of the survey are also available here in our payment center. In April, our Water Matters newsletter featured information on our new enhanced rebates. And this month's newsletter features information on the new strategic plan, the origed funds that we recently, recently received, and the MSW internship program. And I know I typically end my presentation with a video. However, this month I have something extra special to share with you. As part of our strategic plan workshops, there was some discussion about the need for enhanced employee communications. In response, we have been developing an MSWD Intranet named the Hub. This new Intranet provides a private network. This new Intranet provides a private network used to securely share company information and computing resources among our, among our employees. In general, Intranets can really help organizations enhance their communication, but they can also build culture within the organization. After we started taking, talking about the need for an Intranet last fall, Will, who you met earlier, uh, started working with our IT, our IT department to pull together the resources we needed to create a functional Intranet for the district. Some of the work he has continued to do to support the Intranet is moving many of our old static paper and PDF forms over into an in, into an interactive Laserfish form with approval workflows. He's also created calendars so we can track events and even manage our time better. Earlier this year, we asked employees to help us name the Intranet and of course, the top getter, getter, vote getter was The Hub at MSWD. I've asked Will to give you a brief overview and kind of give you a guided tour of the Intranet to see how it's shaping up. Full launch is planned for later this month and Will went upstairs so that he can drive this from his computer upstairs. That's why he's not here in front of you. Go ahead, Will.
Thank you, Marion. Uh, let me go ahead and share my screen here. Okay, so um, thank you again. Um, Assistant General Manager Champion and the Board of Directors for your time. Um, and for the lovely introduction to The Hub. Uh, so here is the, this is the landing page, the homepage of The Hub. Um, so on this page, you'll see various um articles that will cycle through um the features here, um what's happening in the district with the General Managers Report. Um, different events that might be happening that we want to highlight, for example, water talks uh with MSWD that's coming up. Um, this just changed as we used to have the blood drive flyer um in this space as of uh yesterday. Um, a link to our employee benefits page and some informational uh features, like this one is currently the Exploring the Colorado River Aqueduct. So um, along the top of the page here, you'll see various navigation features, so homepage about MSWD. This includes links to our external website, about the About Us, about the, the district. Um, Board of Directors information, mission, vision, values, and our strategic plan. Um, the calendars, so here we have uh various calendars, including our payroll and holiday calendars, uh birthdays and anniversaries, events calendars, um a standby calendar. One of the uh topics that came up in one of the employee events around the strategic plan was um, a wish that we could see it all in one place. So we created the standby calendar, which includes all of the various departments standby information in one place. And then a water bottle request pickup calendar, uh which lets our front office staff know um, who is awaiting pickups for water bottles when they come into the front office. And so it's an easier way to get that information to them. Uh, we have various department pages, so accounting and finance, customer service, engineering, HR and employee services, IT services, operations, and public affairs. Uh, within these, each um, some of them have uh various um other sub-pages that go with them, for example, accounting forums. This will take you to commonly used forums, our W nine forum, some of the other um Laserfish forums here um that um the various departments use. Um, customer service page, engineering page, the HR page here. So this one includes links where employees can now see all of their benefit information, all of the, the benefits that we offer here in this one central location. Um, broken up by various resources and categories. Also with links to other um external sites and CalPERS and things like that. Um, in addition to the benefits, we have employee forums. So here, um, again, some of the old static paper forms that we had, um, I've uh worked with Kurt and our um, and our Laserfish software to convert some of these. Some of them are Laserfish, some of them are not, but various forms here, including direct deposits. Um, as you can see here on the screen, change of address, um emergency contact forms, things like that. Um, in addition to, uh, there's also the employee handbook in our Injury and Illness Prevention Program. Um, our IT Services page here. So it gives a brief description of the IT services. Um, we have our new Intelisys support team, um, their, their pictures, so we know who our dedicated team is and if we see them wandering through the halls here, we know who they are. And also our onsite technicians' contact information as well. In addition, you can click links on the side if you have an IT issue and it will open up in the, the email that's required to send to Intelisys for IT issues and IT support. Um, operations, we have uh the various um sub-departments as well, construction and maintenance, field service, wastewater, water production. Um, wastewater, for example. So here, basic description, um, they do a really good job of providing weekly updates um here that they post onto the Intranet. And then we give also some quick links on the side for them, that, that their department uses uh frequently as well. Um. Public Affairs also includes uh public affairs resources, um, temperature, uh, or templates, um, the bottled water request form, various event flyers, letterhead, logos, color guides, all kinds of resources. And at the bottom of each page, we have all of the department staff as well. Um, going on, so there's, there's various other um tabs here, so resources. So here you'll see uh various associations that were involved with um certification information from the State Resource Control Board, the city information, community and events, CV water counts, Department of Water Resources, um Colorado River information, some of the Groundwater Guardian, Urban Water Institute. We have a video library that includes various um informational, educational videos um as well. And then um, training, uh, links to our training providers, Got Safety and Vector Solutions. And uh, on our Get Involved section here, we have volunteer opportunities such as a blood drive and uh the Pop Tab Collection Program that we do here as well for the uh, that supports the Ronald McDonald House. All right, and that is everything that I have and back to you, Marion.
Thank you, Will. I do want to stress that this is behind the firewall, so if you were an average person on the street, you would not be able to access this site. Uh, you do need to sign on with your MSWD credentials to be able to even get to, to all of these resources, but this is really gonna be our hub or our, our place to collaborate as employees and we'll be able to give the rest of our employees the tools that they need to do their job, whether it be an HR form or a logo or a MSWD color guide. That information is, is now one central repository. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or comments? Director Duff?
Great work on that. Really quick, putting that together too, very impressed. Um, and I do think it's gonna create a lot of cross-department camaraderie and understanding between the different departments and being able to communicate with each other and see what each other are all working on. I think that's great. Great job, guys.
Vice President?
Uh, impressive AF. I mean, it is really uh well-done. And it's a really nice option everybody has to be able to see what everybody else is doing, because I think sometimes you don't, when you're in one department, you don't really get, you don't get the chance to see these meetings, see the General Manager's Report, things like that, so I'm, I'm really just blown away honestly by the quality and um it just speaks highly of the staff, so thank you.
Director Martin?
Ditto, it's just been previously said, uh, good comments, uh. Director Duff and Director Griffin.
Director Myhoppin? And I'll just echo again, it's uh, I think one of the biggest topics we saw in our strategic plan was internal communication. And then a, a big topic of the strategic plan was actually implementing what we came up with, so for it to be that intensive and to have it so quickly, just great job. I think it's gonna be a benefit for the employees to be able to access it all, but I think it's gonna save a lot of time for other employees not having to to go and find a form or this for another employee to just have it all at one other fingertips. That's great, so.
And I, and I thank you all for those comments and I do want to give Will a huge shout out. He was really the driver behind it. He took it upon himself to take a first draft, a first crack at it after hearing about uh the need and it's, it's, it's been a good fit. He's really done a really nice job on it, so um, thank you all.
Thank you. And thank you, Will.
Thank you all.
Moving on to District Council Comments?
Yes, I'll be very brief. Um, some of the items that we've been working on for the district include assisting the district in responding to a fairly voluminous Public Records Act request. Um, also just wanted to report that in the Mission Springs versus DWA case, we filed the petition for review with the California Supreme Court as we reported out at last month's meeting. Um. We also um assisted the district on some employment law matters. Uh, worked with the district staff with enforcement of its industrial discharge ordinance, or we, I should say, we were working with staff on that. And then we continue working on the matter related to acquisition of the easement from SCE. Uh, we're coordinating with Sean O'Connor, the attorney uh that's lead on that. And then working with staff on updating some district policies, including its record retention policy. And then working with staff on analyzing a potential duplication of service issue with another agency. And that's my report.
Thank you. Twenty-three Director's Comments, which includes uh general comments and requests for future agenda items. Director Martin?
Um, I have nothing.
Director Myhoppin?
Yes, sir, I think. I'd like to tell everybody about the district here about an experience that I had. It will show how close the district is being watched by our citizens. And there's two different people, one who is financially strapped and the other person who is very small. There was somebody that was broke down in their car and they were sleeping in the car. So I pulled over about the third day to help him out. As I was giving him a ride into town, the guy says, and I've never met the guy before, he says, I have a question. There's a group of us that go over to Mission Springs Water Park. And we see that big red semi truck out there. Why would you buy, why would the Water District buy that truck and let it sit there? So he's referring to the uh sludge truck. It sits out there and I guess there's a, they, they use the truck when they need to and it just saves a lot of money probably for the uh, company. And so I explained to him that if we didn't buy the truck, that it belonged to one of our vendors and they parked it there and it, it takes the sludge to the dump. The amazing thing is, I don't know how this guy knew I was involved with the Water District. I just met him. So I go to an event and there's a, as I say very well, new person. And they come up to me and start talking to me about the uh Nancy Wright Treatment Center. And some of the things they were saying, I had to really think twice before I answered them to make sure it wasn't something in closed session. So they were watching the meetings that close. They have that much information, I found very fascinating. In fact, they were so curious that they asked me what my, they said, I already know your background with the commissions and everything and government. What I want to know is what your background is with business. And I've never been asked that question before. So I answered them. About business, two businesses that I own, one completely different, and they were happy with it. So I don't know who's watching me. We don't know who's watching the district. So I just wanted to share that with you so you understand that we, we're here, but out there, people are watching right from those who have no money to those who have money. I was, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Director Duff? Vice President?
So Director Meyerhoffen, you're saying that even though your picture's not on the website, they still recognize you?
Well, what I'm saying here is, is that I'm a low-income person. I'm representative for District Five. All of the houses there in District Five, not all of them, the majority of the district houses there in District Five are five hundred thousand dollars and less. Other areas, you're looking at five, six hundred. So for me to go out and campaign, alls I have to do is pick up a guy who's broke down. On the other hand, I'm gonna have to spend a lot of money.
Thank you. Like, last night train, I thought a little bit. Um, my comment was just uh, thank you to staff and everyone that worked hard yesterday to put on the blood drive again. I know that was one of Carol's big projects and um it was different not seeing her there, but uh I hope that we continue to do the blood drives. I think they're a great uh resource for our community. It makes it easy for people to go down and donate and I hope they continue, so. With that, we moved closed session to the beginning of the meeting, so with nothing further, the meeting's adjourned.